We're here today for the regular city council meeting, Tuesday, January the 22nd, 2013, located here at Jasper City Hall at 465 South Main Street. At this point in time, we'd like to call this meeting to order. And if we could, Alton, could we get you to give us a word for it?
Let me ask you, Alton. I want to thank you for one more opportunity to come together. Our God, as we sit in this meeting, we pray that you would touch and give our God our hearts and our minds, that you would lead us in guidance in our speech, and lead us in guidance down the path of righteousness with your name saved. God, let us make college decisions, and we just forever give it in the glory, honor, praise, in Jesus' name we pray.
Okay. First, item of the business is departmental reports. I think you have a copy of them in your manual there from each department. You've gone over those, and have any questions, now would be the time to put them on paper. You'd ask for a motion?
Motion, sir.
Motion been made by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Randy. All in favor? Oh, Alton Scott, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Let the record show the past, you know. And at this time, we have a proclamation, a resolution presentation, said by Mayor Mike Laup, but I believe I won't get the honor of doing that tonight. And I kind of like to do that down front where we can bring out individual luck to be recognized here tonight. Ms. Reesley, Ross Thomas, will you come forward, please, ma'am? Thank you for your service. Let me read this. This proclamation is the fifth annual Pillar of Community Jasper, Texas. Whereas in celebration of Black history heritage, the Pillar of Community Jasper, Texas, was founded by Rita Ross Thomas on February the 24th, 1991, and purpose of serving the African-American community and its honor, strength, and stature can be attributed to the diversity of the many cultures and traditions that are celebrated by the African-American residents of this great community. And whereas, the Pillar of the Community Jasper, Texas celebrates Black history heritage and recognizes African-American leaders in the past, present, and future who and will make an effort in building strong leadership in our community. And whereas, the Pillar of the Community Jasper, Texas, will host their fifth annual Pillar of the Community Award banquet on February the 16th, 2013, in Jasper, Texas, to honor and recognize African-American leaders in our community. And now, therefore, I, State Mike Laup, and Raymond Hobson, Mayor of the City, Pro-Tim Mayor of the City of Jasper, do hereby proclaim, February the 16th, 2013, as Pillar of Community Jasper, Texas, and deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this certificate of recognition to the founder, Rita Ross Thomas, in honor of serving the African-American community and state of Texas. In witness world, I do hereby set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the City of Jasper to be affixed this 22nd day of January in the year 2013.
Thank you so much. Okay. First, I want to say, thank you for presenting us with this proclamation for our Black History Program. And it is something that we need to get our peoples that they're, people to get out and become more developed and strong in leadership. Not only do we just have this for the Black community, we invite all our sisters and brothers. We go up with race, beauty, color, and Dick, I expect you to be there. And, you know, some, some, I live in Houston, but I was born right here in Jasper. And I was telling my sister today that everybody down here is so friendly, you know. We went into a cable company today, people so friendly. They go in the wall walk, everybody speaks to you. And it's such a good town for us to have such a bad name out of Jasper, Texas. You know, when I, a lot of times, people ask me, I was up in Washington a few months ago, and they asked me where I was from, I said, I was from Houston, but I was raised in Jasper. They say, oh, call you. I feel sorry for you. I said, no, it's not like that. It's not like that, y'all. And we need to pull together the white and the black and the others that is in Jasper. We need to pull together and go forward and try to make our, our community shine. I mean, really shine. When you out there in New York or Pennsylvania somewhere, they say something about Jasper, Texas, you want to say, oh, that's a good little town. When I look on, when I look on the website, only thing most you see in Jasper is about a black man got drugged in Jasper. We need to go a little step more in trying to get that, some of that stuff trucked off the website. Start putting some positive stuff in there. Because when people out there in New York, they look up on Jasper, Texas, that's all they see. Danger that drug by some white peoples. And we know that that happened to our peoples in Jasper. We know that. It didn't come from our community. But the peoples outside don't know that this wasn't a thing that happened every day in Jasper. That's perception that they have. And it's so firm, it's so unfair for both the white and the blacks to have that kind of, have that kind of reputation in the United States.
That's correct. So thank you for what you do.
Just pull together, y'all, and go forward and try to get Jasper now cleaned up.
We can do that, you're here.
Right. Oh, I need to get Michael sign this.
Please. You get it to Ms. Carrie, she will take care of that for us. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Items for discussion and/or action at this point in time, I've taken, consider approval for the five cents of minutes. Number one being special call city council meeting, November the 9th, 2012. Second, the regular city council meeting, November the 19th, 2012. The emergency call city council meeting, November the 28th, 2012. And the regular city council meeting, December the 17th, 2012. And the special call city council meeting, December the 21st, 2012. Do we have any questions or confirm without any of those minutes?
A motion that we approve the minute.
You get a second?
Second.
Let the record show that Ms. MacMillan made a motion to accept, seconded by Randy Fayers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Shall pass you now, sir. Okay. Number two. Okay. We have a, to consider a request from the Honor and Remember Texas Chapter, city participation in their Memorial Day weekend, two-day event. Do we have someone here from?
Roy James.
Would you like to come up and address us for that?
Thank you, sir. Counselors, privileged to be with you this evening. I have prepared something to put in front of you to make my presentation a little quicker, since you've got lots on the agenda, so we're not spending too much time, okay?
We appreciate it.
So we can all be on the same page.
We appreciate it.
Okay. I'd like to also wish each of you a very happy New Year, since I've not been able to do that personally. But I thank you for your service. I also would like to offer my, my personal respect to pillars of community for your efforts in trying to make a difference in our community as well. We all have a part to play, I think, in volunteerism and looking ahead and having vision to know what is good about all of us is a very, very important.
Absolutely.
The other thing, very quickly, sir, if I may, I'd like to also pay my own personal accolades and respect to the employees of the city for their absolutely fine and outstanding efforts with Christmas in the Park. The support of the city council with that, certainly ladies like Denise over here and Debbie Foster, who's in the room as well, key individuals in that. Everybody had a lot of effort in that. And I'm telling you, from my perspective, it's still being talked about out on the streets, very, very positive, and it just gives us a great deal of joy and hope for our community.
We do appreciate it.
With that said, I'm here on behalf of Honor and Remember, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit national organization that was created by a father who lost his son in Fallujah, Iraq, serving in the military with the Marines in 2005. And through his grief, he had found that with all the symbols and emblems that we have for practically everything in our country, we've never had an officially recognized symbol that represents our nation's fallen. So he created this grassroots effort, very much like that was done in 1971, when a woman who was missing her husband in Vietnam, as we were exiting Vietnam, they had not found his body. He was missing in action and was very, very concerned that our government would just sort of forget about those that we hadn't recovered. And so they created what's now known as the POW MIE flag, which I would hope that all of you are familiar with. This too is a flag. The reason for a flag is because it's meant to be a consistent daily reminder to all of the citizenry that our freedoms that we enjoy, that we have in this country, are truly paid for by ultimate sacrifices by our military. And the two things that we have found that those families have in common is that, one, they truly want to know that the, that the life given in the service of this country was not in vain. Secondly, especially with a lot of time passing, they have a tendency to believe that the American public as a citizenry has basically sort of kind of forgotten about their personal loss, because these families, as you can imagine, miss their, their loved one on a daily basis. So the state organization was created on Veterans Day in 2010 by myself here in the state of Texas. There are 17 state organizations that are currently formed and others forming as we speak. The flag is being flown throughout the United States and certainly throughout Texas as it has been endorsed by this city council. You'll find that paperwork there in front of you, along with the Commissioner's Court. We were very privileged. And the other thing that I want to make very, very clear is, is this organization is a statewide organization. And I'm very, very proud to say that as the Pillar of Community is located here in Jasper, Texas, the entire organization for the entire state of Texas headquarters is here in Jasper. And we believe that to be something quite honorable, and we are looking forward to bringing even more honor to the city of Jasper with our efforts with this statewide. What I'm asking for this evening, we travel all over the state of Texas presenting flags, personalized flags, with the rank, name, the date that the soldier fell, and where they fell, be it Iraq, Afghanistan, Vietnam, Germany, Japan, wherever. To the families in a very public event, it's not meant to be folded and put away so that no one sees. It's, it's meant to be given to, to remind those families that we have not forgotten their loss, we have not forgotten the sacrifice that that family has paid on our behalf, and that we wish to continue to give tribute and honor to those families by doing so. Those of you who were with us, and some of you were on 4th of July last year, we had that honor of being able to present some of those flags to our own citizenry here in Jasper, Texas. You'll see what I have been focused on this year as a, as a motivation, and that is, if you're going to do something, make it matter. And it's real, real important that we stay focused on that. The Memorial Day weekend, unfortunately, and this is a broad statement, so if it doesn't apply to you, please know that if the shoe fits, wear it, and if it doesn't, then you walk along. But as a citizenry, we have a tendency to try to pay tribute to something very, very special, of making it a day on the calendar. And so goes Memorial Day. However, over time, even though we've been at war for 13 years, and people are, our military soldiers are dying almost daily, and you and I as citizens have not been asked to sacrifice anything in those 13 years on their behalf. The reality is, is that Memorial Day has become nothing more than a three-day weekend to have another extra day off of work. We're so excited, ha, ha, three-day weekend, all right. We pack up the kids, pack up our skis and what have you, go to the lake, go hunting, go, go do whatever we want to do, without the first thought of what Memorial Day stands for. And it's really, really unfortunate. So because Jasper is the headquarters for the state of Texas, we wanted to make certain that we brought honor back to that day, and certainly to Jasper as well. We travel all over the state of Texas presenting flags at various events. And we thought that, by the way, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit that we have has no paid staff. We have no paid staff at the national level, and even though I have privilege and honor of being the state director for Honor and Remember of Texas, it is a non-paid position. We do it strictly because we feel a connection and an obligation to try to make certain these families are not forgotten, and that our citizenry are reminded of that ultimate sacrifice. But we have decided that it is as easy to bring a lot of families to Jasper, and because we are the headquarters, we want to do just that. If you look on, on the page past the flag presentations, and those of you who have not seen a flag presentation, can see examples of those flag presentations. And as I've stated earlier, this goes all the way back to the founding of our country. We've never had a symbol that recognizes our nation's fallen. On the third page, you will see a flag with a gentleman dressed in a Revolutionary War uniform. And I want to bring that to your attention, because Corporal John, on 11th of September in 1777, was fallen in brand new wine during the American Revolution, and this flag was presented to that descendant of that family. So we made not only national history, but we made organizational history by making that as far back as we've gone. We're bringing quite a few families to Jasper from across the state of Texas. Currently, we are working with 20 families. You'll see the list. These are the names of the soldiers from those families, the days that they fell, where they fell, and the, the towns that they come from. You'll see that it's everything from Livingston, Houston, Woodville, Kirbyville, Buena, Jasper, Lufkin, Center, Lumberton, Garland, Sabine, and so on. You'll also see that we are going to be honoring a soldier who is buried and died on the Arizona on December 7th, 1941. That family lives in Livingston. The next gentleman, which happens to be a Monzingo family, I don't know if there's any relationship there or not. They're from Houston. And Sergeant Garland Monzingo fell March 9th, 1945, in Germany, when he was shot down on a B-17 over Germany. The, you'll see that we are going to be honoring some Vietnam soldiers as well, Iraq, Afghanistan. The Korea soldier was missing in action for 54 years and was just recently brought home. And so we're going to pay tribute to that family who happens to live in Woodville. But anyway, we're bringing all these families, and what I'm asking the, the city to do is, because of this and because of the honor, we were hopes that the city council would do as what the Commissioner's Court recently did last week. And they have stated that they wish to have a part to play in this honorable event. And what we're asking the city to do is, we would love very much for the mayor and the city council to have an opportunity to see these and meet these families when they come in. And we were in hopes that maybe the city would consider a reception for these families, just a punch and cookie sort of thing, just to give you folks an idea or an ability to pay tribute to these families. Every soldier that comes from these towns, their mayor is being invited, and the county judge from their county is also being invited. So there's going to be mayors from some of these, because they're going to be accompanying the family. Not only we're paying tribute to that soldier who fell, the family of that soldier, but as we pay honor to that family, we're also paying tribute and honor to the city, where that soldier came from and where that family lives. And so this is meant to give us an opportunity as a community to roll out the red carpet, if you will, and pay a high tribute and honor to these families. We've gotten other organizations involved. The Women's Civic Club is going to be hosting any Patriots luncheon for the families. The Art League is going to be hosting a nationally known artist who is 78 years old, who is currently painting every single soldier that has fallen from Texas since, since 9/11. He's been on ABC, NBC, CBS, even Texas Country Reporter. He's retired, but at 78 years old, he's literally painting every single day to make sure that these families have portraits of their, of their soldiers. Some of those are going to be presented at that event. The other thing that we would like you to consider is use of the special events, transportation. Because we are looking at several different venues possibly, we would like very much, since these folks are relatively new and never have been to Jasper, rather than having them all in different cars and trying to get them from this venue to this venue to this venue, it would be so much easier for those families to park their car, put them on a bus, take them to the next venue, so that we have them collectively put together, and it just works a whole lot better. That's what we're asking for. And we, we hope that you will see this as a very honorable thing, and a way for you as our city leaders to be involved, and we hope that that involvement will also give you honor, as I'm sure that it will. If you have any questions, I mean, we're happy to answer them. All the pictures there that are in, in, in the portfolio there are giving you visuals. I can sit here and say, we're bringing the one and only life-size Liberty Bell to Jasper that travels all over the United States, but unless you've seen it, you would not know what that is. A picture of that Liberty Bell is, is, is there. The other main organizations that we have already met and established relationships with at other venues in the state of Texas, everything from the Patriot Guard Riders, Rolling Thunder, the traveling memorial wall of Texas fallen heroes will also be here in Jasper for the public to view. These are very, very much teaching moments for anyone who has a child, some of which were never even born in 9/11. To bring them to these things and help them understand what it is and what liberty means to them and where they get their freedom from. And to give them an opportunity at a young age, because it, as always is, it's train up a child in the way that they should go. Patriotism isn't anything that you're born with, it has to be taught. And that's part of the magic of, of, of doing this, is reminding people and having them focus again on, on their patriotism. You know, we can, we can, if we can turn patriotism into a bumper sticker, and we generally have done that by saying, oh, yes, I support the troops. Well, I appreciate that comment, but my next question to you would be, what have you done for them? And so this is what we are doing for those, those families.
And this two-day event is going to be a Saturday, Sunday?
It's a Friday, Saturday, sir.
Friday, Saturday.
Yes, sir. And the reason for that is because we didn't want to take...
Ahead of the Monday holiday?
I beg pardon?
Ahead of the Monday holiday.
Ahead of the Monday, Monday holiday. The other aspect that I want to bring your attention to, the closest military facility to Jasper is Fort Pope. Fort Pope, as some of you may know, is one of three main staging bases to send our troops over to Iraq and Afghanistan to bring them back. So we have a lot of wounded warriors and what have you that are coming through that facility as we speak. The headquarters for the 4th Brigade 10th Mountain Division, which was and still is responsible for a lot of the heaviest fighting in the mountains of Afghanistan, they've lost a lot of soldiers. Not all of them from Texas, of course, but the headquarters is there. And we have already contacted those brigade commanders, the Garrison Commander, to also bring them here to pay tribute to their service to our country as well. This is going to be a very, very highly attended event by all of these other organizations that are listed in the portfolio. I've given a, a copy of that to Tommy Boykin for record for you folks, and, because I've got a couple of other presentations we're trying to make. But anyway, with that said, if you have any other questions, I'd love to answer them.
So you want us to try, you're asking us to provide the transportation between events?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How many people are involved?
We're talking about 20 families, and we're estimating, and we will know as we go, and of course, keep that information...
So you're not looking for an answer online?
No, sir, I'm not.
Okay. Gives us a chance to...
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I do want to make you aware of it. Some of the city council were not in place when the city adopted and endorsed the chapter here in Texas, and, you know, raising the flag and flying the flags at the facilities and what have you. By the way, Texas has officially adopted the flag at the state level, and we're going to Austin next month for them to officially endorse the flag, as 17 other states have done.
Is that any question?
Any other questions? Okay.
We appreciate you.
We'd like to bring that information back as, as we get it, as far as the specific numbers. Obviously, 20 families. We're not looking to, to have anyone else transported other than the families. We want the families to be well taken care of when they come to town. Okay? Thank you. I know it's long-winded, and that was a short version, but that's very much.
You need a lot of the information that you got. Yes, my one question is, Tommy, do you think we can put something together in the next few weeks as he gets the information to you to be able to do not only the transportation but the...
Reception.
The media, we can talk about the punch and stuff, and the location, maybe.
I just need about the time.
We'll have to, yeah, we nail it all down, get a reception here, and then the other part is whether the mayor and the council wants to be here, you know, to welcome the families in, in your official capacity. But we can tell y'all what, what higher to be and everything, so, yes.
Well, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I would be honored. I'll make a motion.
I'll say. A motion been made by Hazel to accept and seconded by Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? I'll carry your hands.
Thank you, brother.
Next item on the agenda is consider resale of some trust property. As I said, I have no idea, but Tommy, you come up here and explain this to me.
This is information from the tax attorneys that hold the sales every few months or whatever, and they're, they sent this to get it on our agenda tonight. They've sold two properties. One bidder is Ms. Patricia Williams on the, the first track in John Bevel survey, and then the second one they're asking to be approved is the Philly Mustang in the William Ferguson survey. And y'all can see the bid amounts and the recovery, which is very slim, but it does get the properties back on the roll. So, I mean, get y'all's call. We just, they sell them and then they send it over here for, for council approval.
Not having looked at any of these before, is this, I mean, having approved and really been aware of these types of sales before, is it pretty standard for these valuations?
Yes, it's...
I mean, are you recommending that the city do this?
We have, previously, we've always accepted. I think there was one, one bid, the PO, and it went back, and then it came back, and they, they broke it or whatever. But historically, it's pennies on the dollar. It's a share sale or courthouse sale, and they, they put all the information on paper or on the reports that some of the people get, and hold the sale, and it still is...
Is that your recommendation to accept?
I would. I would go ahead and sell them and get it back on the, you're not going to recover a whole lot, but you'll get it back on the...
That's what we're looking for. I'll make a motion to accept. Second. Let me say?
Second.
Motion been made by the committee, seconded by Alton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I ask you now. The next item on the agenda, regards to Jasper Public Library Advisory Board... The next item on the agenda regards to Jasper Public Library Advisory Board, seems that timeframe that Ron Allen took current, pick along the committee to nominate Kerry Gunter and Linda Lane. Is there anything, questions, any concerns, anything on that?
Second.
Motion's been made by Frank Scott and seconded by Frank Sayers to approve and get all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So they pass the amendment. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consider ordinance number one dash thirteen dash one, vision updates to the existing City of Jasper Code, Chapter twenty-four, utilities, that being article three sewer disposal. Like this is what kind of been kicked around as grease traps and stuff. Tommy, you going to enlighten us on that?
My call, your fair opinion and all that, you are, I would tell you, we have a major problem with grease and we either address it with an ordinance or TCEQ will, and you do not like TCEQ ordering anything. So that's just my comment on it. I mean, he knows the horror with all of it, but if they come in and put in them, their claim will be-
Are we at risk-
It'll be quite expensive.
Are we at risk of passing a threshold in time whereby we'd be penalized or be fined?
We have a major grease problem and they are aware that we do-
Where can you speak more to that?
No, we're not on a timeframe, right?
I mean, is there a date on the calendar that this has got to be enacted or you're going to be fined?
No, it's not on-
It's just getting to the point that it's going to have to be addressed. Because if it's not, then you could feasibly have to raise the rates for everybody in Jasper to make up for the forty-seven or forty-eight people that have grease traps. Basically, that's what it boils down to. I do realize that there's a few public entities like your schools and have them, but the majority of them are going to be businessmen here in Jasper.
Primarily restaurants, right?
Yes, primarily restaurants.
Is it exclusively restaurants?
Sir?
Is it exclusively restaurants?
Your delis and your doughnut shops, your delis and your grocery stores all have grease traps.
I mean, food services and-
Generally, that's general rule. Your food service industry is the ones that have them.
What about our meat markets?
Meat markets, I've got them, but they're, as needed, we sample those and decide exactly what-
Cooking, do they?
No, they don't do any cooking. So, you know, they clean up and you get a little bit of alcohol water they clean with, but you don't get, like when you wash pots, it's full of grease or where they put big deals of Dublin's and, you know, this kind of stuff.
But the water lines, I'd say, rather than pumps, how function will burn off, having to be replaced, they're expensive.
Yeah, we, our callouts for sewer blockages due to grease is tremendous. Pumps burn up in our lift stations due to overload of grease. It gets to be a pretty expensive operation when you factor it all in there. And this ordinance has been, Greg and I have worked on it for over a year now. It wasn't just one of them things we woke up and said, well, we better do something. We addressed each issue and we addressed it the best way we knew how to address it. There were some brules brought about, sample ports. Right now, when we pull samples, we're having a cool amount of a grease trap itself. That don't work because your grease trap is to keep grease in it. You need to know what's coming out into your line, that's the reason of the sample ports, where you can get an accurate sample. You got to inform now, you got a good sample, and you can test it to see how many of these people can get their pumping time expanded. Because it costs five, six hundred bucks every time the pump shows up at your place to pump a grease trap. Granted, the sample port may cost five or six hundred dollars, but if we can cut your pumping down one time a year, you're already paying for it. And you pay for it every year after that, because you're not paying that money out. We've got some in here, we've got, we got ten that pump every sixty days. That gets expensive in years' time. Some of these could possibly be cut back to every ninety days or a hundred twenty days. I can't guarantee that because I've not seen the samples pulled from them yet. And that's the whole idea behind this ordinance. One of the council asked me about the criminal offense deal, T and W. One out of a thousand, you got to take two judges, look for value, it's going to fix whatever you tell them to fix. This is just for the one out of a thousand, it says, I'm not going to do it. Okay, we'll see if it fits. And that's the whole reason it's in there.
Yeah, currently, we have no fines or penalties whatsoever.
No.
Mike, this ordinance, it has no effect on residents, right?
No, it will never-
Okay. What kind of effect does it have on churches?
If you have a commercial kitchen, then you would fall under that, yes. If you have just a residential kitchen, no.
But if you're not cooking every day, you're not going to have-
You're not going to have that much of a problem. It's when you start cooking, you know, well, you see, y'all have a grease trap, so y'all are compliant.
But you don't have, but do they have a port? That's what you're talking about?
Yes, they have, they have sample ports.
Okay, okay.
Yes. The newer ones-
The newer ones have it?
Yes, I overstepped my bounds and told them to put a sample port in, even though our ordinance still allowed for it, because I knew this was going to blow up sooner or later, like McDonald's, it's all concrete in it. You do it one time. Up here at Jacob, the same principle, you do it one time and you're through with it.
Now, I talked to a restaurant owner today and we started talking and they were asking questions and it dawned on me, maybe the best thing to do in this situation, I realized we need to do this, but you and I talked about it this afternoon, maybe the best thing we can do to this is possibly postpone this to the next meeting and have a workshop with all the restaurants you think that would be effective.
I think that would be very effective.
Invite them to a meeting, discuss the pros and cons of this.
Because they may have a lot of misconceptions about this ordinance and not understand what's going on.
And then we'll leave you, might be some complaint, it might not happen with the-
Yes, that's right, exactly. And I think it would be very beneficial, because they get their questions answered, the council gets to see the little limb about it.
And we learn a little more, yeah?
Yes, that's right, exactly. And then y'all may come up with specific questions you have about our ordinance. We can also address that at the workshop.
Okay. Are you making a motion? If we're ready. My motion.
Well, we've had a discussion, do you have any other questions?
I'm going to make a motion that we table this to the next meeting and that you set a date and contact these restaurant owners and see if we can have, you know, a workshop. Invite anybody that wants to come to it and that gives them an opportunity to voice their opinions.
Yes, they will.
Okay, I'll say it.
Okay, the motion's been made to table grease trap ordinance, seconded, been made by Randy Sayers, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So they pass the amendment. Next item on the agenda is the order of election, our general election. You can just read the small portion of it, I think we all pretty well familiar with it. It's pretty much the same time every year. It's for order of election for the City of Jasper. An election is hereby ordered to be held on May eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, for the purpose of election of mayor and election of council members, positions one and two. Already voting by personal preference will be conducted each weekday. The City Hall will shoot it past Main Street in Jasper, Texas, between hours late AM and five PM, beginning April twenty-ninth, and ended May third, two thousand and thirteen, between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. End it on May sixteenth and end it on May seventh. Do we have any questions or any comments on the general election?
I'll move to move. Second.
Motion's been made for approval by Councilman Scott, seconded by Mitch McMillan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we're going to pass the amendment. Number seven is consider resolution of two-nine-two-four interlocal agreement that goes along with the election.
Well, I'm sorry, can you back up and ask for a motion on the City of Jasper notice of election as well as approve and set date for canvassing votes? That's also number six, there's three.
The notice of election actually does not need to be voted on, that is only to be signed so that we can post that notice, that does not need to be approved, the order does. You've done that, but you do need to approve and set a date for canvassing the votes on May the twentieth. That does need to be approved.
May the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion been made for canvassing, May the twentieth, by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Mitch McMillan.
Yeah, what she said.
By Alton Scott.
Alton, you must speak up, right? By Alton Scott.
Maybe I can speak up.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the amendment. Anything else, Rick?
No, you're free to go here.
Before we get carried, before we get down there. Before I step on my tongue again. Okay, we get back to the resolution from School District for the May election, does that kind of go along with what we've just done, or do we need to address that individually?
Individually, please.
Okay. It said that the resolution number two-nine-two-four is an interlocal government agreement. This agreement is made this day, going to take the day of two thousand and thirteen, between the City of Jasper and the City of Jasper and Defense School District. Do I need to read this whole?
No, that's fine.
Okay, I'll read it and see if everybody has. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
That's you, Randy. Motion been made by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Randy Sayers, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that, pass the amendment. Take the amendment. Do we need the interlocal agreement between Jasper County and the City of Jasper? Okay, do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Scott, seconded by Randy Sayers, all in favor?
Aye.
So that, pass the amendment. And we got one more to get to. We need consideration on Akron-Holler-Mulholland Park Street assignment, that being Akron-Holler Drive. It simply says that, like the mayor and the city council consider naming the road that enters into the trailer park. That's on U-965, down across from Weavers Brothers.
I mean, motion?
Motion's been made by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Mitch McMillan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that, pass the amendment. All right. Next item on the agenda, it's been the executive session where we've had one, the agenda added to it, let's see if we can kind of get into that first, I think. There's, next item of the business is to discuss the police chief's search and consider some options, understanding that we've had an aggressive come up in that.
Mr. Walker here.
Walker, you want to address what we had on that?
Well, basically, we had agreed before that SGR would actually be the people that would do the search for us. On reconsidering, SGR decided they really couldn't do it in the way, method in which they did it. And they decided they really didn't want to do it at all. So I then went to Waters Consulting and one of them is a copy of their agreement, which is exactly the same except for the price, they increased their price also by ten percent. But I think we now have an all-in price. And other than that, nothing else has changed other than pricing as far as Waters was concerned. So the all-in price would be twenty-three-five, that includes everything except the candidate travel expenses to interview with the city council.
We'll have probably, I guess, some reservations now with us going forward with this until we get some meeting with someone, maybe sit down and bid with us, and I would make the suggestion that I don't see any reason that we might not get all, own the money to try to- Where would we be at legally just in appointing someone, give us our legality and where our liabilities would be? And as I'm sitting here saying this, I'm looking back at Larry, and Larry, I think that maybe we need to call on you. Maybe I'm stepping over somewhere, but to draw us up something that would show us, because the last thing we want is any more negative comeback from what we're facing today. We want this to be positive for our community and the community as a whole.
That's right.
And I just, I really think that we need to get, like I said, maybe something from Larry to give us what we can actually legally do and what would be our pending liability that we have to look at, because I'm in darkness. That's true.
I believe Larry's, excuse me, I believe Larry stated that we could either stay within our city to appoint a police chief outside, am I correct?
That's true. I got a consensus from quite a few of the attorneys that we've talked to that said, yes, the council is quite empowered to just appoint a chief. And there were one or two, not necessarily Larry, I would say, but there were one or two who said that that might be the simplest and easiest if the council had a candidate that they could agree on.
That-
It would definitely be a cheaper alternative, it would definitely-
Right now, that's a pretty big issue. And I would like to see, maybe Larry puts something in writing to us so that we'll have it here and maybe we can table this until we get that, until, even if we have to call a special call meeting or something, sit down and go over it with him in an open session.
Did you watch the motion? Motion to table?
I'll say it.
Put it second.
Alton.
Motion's been made to table this until we can get further, and seconded by Alton Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that we pass the amendment. Okay. All right. We have an executive session announced. The city council, all members being present, will enter into closed executive session pursuant to Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one oh-seven-one, confrontation with attorneys regarding pending litigation and deemed appropriate, takes actions on the above matters. This time is now in those present as councilmen would be Mitch McMillan, Council Lady Nathan Johnson, Randy Sayers, and Alton Scott, Mayor Proctor Kim, Raymond Hodgson. The time is now six fifty PM.